The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our public hearing for the Town of Plainville's proposed FY 2020 town budget. If you please stand for the pledge, I'll have Councilwoman Tompkins lead us in it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will, as I said, we will be having a public hearing on our proposed budget. First order of business is for our town clerk to read the notice, so if you would do that, please.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 7, Section 5 of the Charter of the Town of Plainville, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Plainville Town Council at 7:00 PM on Thursday, March 7, 2019, in the council chambers of the Municipal Center to hear public comments on the budget for the Town of Plainville for FY 20 as proposed by the Town Manager, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 28th day of February.
Thank you. We'll begin by having a presentation. The Town Manager is going to review some of the items on the municipal side of the budget, and Superintendent Brummet will then step up and do some overview of the request by the Board of Education. So we'll turn it over to Robert Lee. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight's presentation will be a kind of abbreviated version of what we did on Monday night. Copies of the slides are up on the front table for anybody who wants to get copies of them, and we'll have them posted online probably first thing tomorrow morning. So with that, we have 34 slides, and tonight, I think 18 of them are from the Board of Ed and 16 of them for the town, so. I think it's 53% versus 47% anyhow. Total town budget, a little bit over $62,238,000, which represents an increase of $2.2 million or 3.63%. This is a pie chart of the four major categories. Board of Ed makes, the education budget makes up about 62%, the town about 29%, debt service 7.6%, and capital projects, at least with the contribution from the general government budget, is about 1.5%. Expenditure changes, Board of Education operating budget, 3.29%, 0.29% of the 3.29%, 0.29% represents the teachers' retirement contribution that's in the Governor Lamont's proposed budget. The Board of Education had approved the 3% increase. It's our understanding that his proposed legislation would require the payment to be made out of the Board of Education's budget, and that's why that stands at 3.29%. Town government is a 2.69% increase, debt service 7.6% increase, capital projects 18.7%. With regards to the debt service, while it's increasing by $334,000, it will be complete, that number will completely be offset by using, by utilizing debt management funds, and that's recommended as part of the budget as well. So that really nets out to being a flat number with regards to that. Put it here, the expenditure increases for the last eight years, which are in blue, and we also put in the ninth year, which is in yellow, and just to note that the average increase, including the proposed increase over the last nine years, would be 1.86%. 1.86% over nine years. Estimated direct revenue changes, and these are based upon the Governor's proposed budget. We're going to see intergovernmental revenues increased by $168,000. You saw that he's also proposing $107,000 be paid for the teachers' retirement fund, so you can, you can pretty much net out about $60,000 increase based upon the proposed budget. Grand list, $261,000, that's based on a grand list growth of about a half a percent during the last year, and some other minor changes in the rest of those categories. Major drivers of the general government increase, payroll. Other than police overtime increase, we're proposing increase to full-time and part-time employees at 2%. Police overtime going from $450,000 to $550,000. The $450,000 overtime number, it was raised to 450 a little bit over five years ago. Over the last five years, the actual, at the end of the year, police overtime ended up being closer to, you know, averaged over $600,000, we're proposing, it is being proposed that we, we need to bump that up. We've have consistently been over that number, and, and we feel that, I feel that the time has come, that we're not going to, we're not going to live within the 450, so we should at least be more realistic as far as that, what we're planning on. Recycling fees, as I mentioned at the last, the last meeting on Monday, the presentation, the recycling market has turned upside down. We now have to, we're now anticipating that we're going to have to pay a tip fee for, for depositing recycling, recycling at a recycling center. We're currently getting revenue for it through June 30th, but our contract is up. We're with 13 other towns, we're bidding it out, but towns are now signing up to, and they're paying tip fees in the $60 to $70 per ton range. We were estimating that that impact to this budget next year will be about $64,000. And the police retirement number increase is $81,000. They have a defined benefit plan. About half of that is because our actuaries, Hooker and Holcomb, has done some analysis with regards to mortality tables. People are living longer, and they're recommending that we need to put in a little bit more money than we would normally put in, approximately $40,000 in addition to what we would normally put in because of people are living longer. So if not for the increasing the police overtime, if not for accounting for mortality rates increase, and not accounting for the $64,000 for recycling, the general government budget increase would have been 1.5%. That's the note at the bottom. Now I will turn the clicker over to Dr. Brummet.
Good evening, everyone. As Robert mentioned, this has been reduced quite a bit from my presentation the other evening, and it is largely focused on the numbers in our budget, not, not at all about our programs, only slightly. So just to make sure I always keep this in the forefront, that the budget is designed to further our vision, and we are about the work that we do with our students, which includes students' teaching and learning. So everything in the budget is reflected in this vision statement document. We are consistently in the lower quadrant of per pupil expenditures in Plainville. We're proud of the fact that in spite of that, we do a great job with our kids, and our programs are well regarded by our families, but it is important for everyone to know that we, we don't spend a lot of money on our children compared to the vast majority of other districts. Our eight-year budget history, similar to what the Town Manager already outlined, that when you take into account the money that was allocated, as well as some of the money that we had to turn back when we had ECS cuts during the last, not this year, but the two prior budget years, our eight-year average is 1.07% budgetary increases. The past several years have been significantly impacted by rising healthcare costs. Just so the public's aware, right now, we are in a budget freeze at the Board of Budget because we want to make sure we end the year on a balanced note. We did have to do, deal with some significant ECS cuts over the last two years, however, we aren't expecting one this year, and we are on track to close out our budget in a balanced fashion. The other night, I showed an ECS slide, which did show an increase. It did have the wrong number, we've corrected that. Our ECS money, our education cost sharing money, has gone up this year to $194,000. However, as Mr. Lee pointed out earlier, that is somewhat offset by the state's decision, or likely decision, to include some of the TRB, or Teachers Retirement Board, benefits back to the town at over $100,000. So while we're going up on ECS, there is a bit of an offset with that because of the teachers' retirement impact. So we have, good news too going forward is Plainville continues to be one of the districts whose ECS grant will go up. Most districts are either going backwards or getting zeroed out, but because of our status economically, we do get more money than most districts. However, again, we have to consider all the offsets. Our enrollment here in Plainville is pretty steady. The prep projections that were done several years ago, we continue to have more enrollment than was originally projected, but for the good of this budget presentation, safe to say that our student population is likely to remain very steady for the foreseeable This is a chart that shows the major budget drivers for us, and much like the town, it's, a lot of it has to do with salaries. We have about 400 employees, and many of them are under contracts, bargaining unit contracts, which dictate their annual raises. And also on the teacher line, which is our biggest line, many teachers this year achieved higher educational status and therefore went into an even more expensive salary lane. So you can see that teachers and parents had the biggest increase contractually, administrators and transportation, not as much. And the three highlighted areas and areas in yellow reflect contracts that are currently under negotiations. So we've estimated that they'll get a 2% increase, but we cannot be certain until we get around in the spring when those contracts will be finalized. The other line that we had a pretty significant increase is substitutes. We've analyzed that for the past several years, and we're a district of many young women who are having children. We also have people that have been out for extended leaves of absence due to medical issues, so our sub-costs have gone up. When you look at our summary page, the budget essentially is going up, just considering the increases to the Board budget, about 2.09%. The other big drivers, though, that we have to include are the health insurance costs. And again, though we switched to a better plan this year, it's much less expensive than the HSA plan that we had for several years, the costs went up another 8%. So we still have a pretty significant health cost increase this year. The other thing I wanted to make the public aware of is our Wheeler project. For, we didn't, to save lots of money, we did not use portable classrooms to do the Wheeler project. That would have added another $1 million. However, in order to make it work using SwingSpace, we did have to relocate our preschool classrooms, typically assigned to Wheeler. They're now at Linden, but we have to provide transportation. So that is a $52,000 cost. Luckily, that's only one more year because we intend to have the school ready for occupation for the preschoolers by the middle of next year. So when you add in the preschool costs and the health insurance costs, that's a 3% increase or $38 million. As Mr. Lee mentioned earlier, we've had to add to that since the Board passed this budget, the impact of the TRB. That's not finalized by the state or the governor, but it's probable, highly probable. And this is another breakdown of our budget in terms of what percentage of our budget is on certain line items. So you can see that the biggest cost for increase is salaries and benefits. We had some slight reductions in professional services and repairs. Our transportation costs are going up slightly, thanks to some really good oversight by our Director of Finance. And our utilities, building supplies are going up slightly, equipment going down slightly, dues and fees, very small increase. So the total change that makes up the 3% is represented by those major drivers or $1.1 million. And again, just to further show the impact of some of the line items that I wanted to highlight, health insurance makes almost 1% of our increase. The Wheeler project cost, about 0.14% of the increase, and those two together almost make up a percentage point of why we have a 3% increase. The Board's proposed budget really does another, we've been doing this very successfully for many years, reallocating existing resources. Wherever we wanted to add staff, we relied on some staff not continuing forward. So this year, we have our teacher retired, retiring, who will not be replaced, but because of our class sizes and social studies and some recommendations from the NEAS Committee, we are adding or recommending the addition of a social studies teacher at the high school. We are reducing two special tutors at the high school and using those funds to get one more special education teacher at the high school due to a heavy caseload of eighth graders coming up to the high school. Linden Street School is going to reduce a behavior tutor because of retirement, but we need to add a literacy tutor at Wheeler. And then our capital budget is another area that we've had pretty low funding in recent years. This year, we initially looked at an $808,000 capital. That was the initial proposal from my administration. I reduced that immediately to about $566,000, and that is what the Board of Ed approved. And then in consultation with the Town Manager, we made some further reductions down to $412,000. Just in a brief overview of what's included in that capital plan, we've included district cleaning equipment. Last year, we zeroed out all facilities improvements, so we had to put that back in to maintain our buildings. We have security improvements such as cameras. It's important to note that we have written a security grant, and we're waiting to hear back on that grant. So some of these items will have some offsets by that grant if we are awarded it. Unfortunately, we haven't heard back yet, and we're not quite sure when we will. We've also included looking at the design for a more secure front entrance to the high school. All of our other schools, well, Wheeler will once their renovation is done, but all of our schools, when someone comes into the school, they're in a foyer that's locked before they get into the school. That isn't the case at the high school, which we'd like to change. Because of some of the reductions that we had to make, right now, we're proposing just the design of that entrance, and then in subsequent years, we hope to get the entrance redesigned. We've also recommended the chiller, the roof chillers be replaced at the top lawn. They are getting ready to fail. We're also recommending that we continue with Phase 2, our monitors at the high school. We did half from last year. To save money, we would like to do the other half this year because they're currently about 10 years old, and they're a major component of our instructional program, and some of them are not, not working well. And our Chromebook replacement cycle indicates replacing sixth, grade 6, 9, and 10, and Chromebook cases to go along with that. We also have pretty much eliminated computer labs at all of our schools because of the Chromebook initiative, but in lieu of computer labs now, we're getting into STEAM activities, technology and engineering activities even at the elementary level. So some of the components of this budget reflect our continuation of our Makerspace program. And, let's see here, technician laptops. Our technicians serve the entire town, and many of them have not had a laptop upgraded in years, so we're recommending $6,000 in laptops for our technicians. And security cameras at the high school, and kindergarten iPads. Each, we don't have one-on-one iPads at the elementary level, but each kindergarten classroom has five, and we need to make sure every classroom has five iPads that work, and many of them are past their useful life. So all of those changes to the capital plan now add up to $412,000. As mentioned previously, we do have a security grant that is pending, and that could potentially offset some of this by about $51,000. I also want to make sure the public was aware of the middle school. The middle school's getting pretty elderly, and we've had some estimates done on many of the items that are getting close to not, not doing very well or potential failure. So we, these total estimates, we do not put our capital plan with the hope that in a few years, when it reaches the age that it needs to reach in order to be eligible for renovation, that these would be things that really do have to be attended to. For example, at the middle school, whenever there's a bad rainstorm, there's leaks throughout the school. And some of the other items there are listed, such as upgrading the chillers and other HVAC improvements that are very outdated. It appears that we could look at a renovation in '22, '23, but I do want to make everyone aware that these are items that could need attention prior to that, but we're hoping to get past to the point where we can renovate the building. So just a quick summary of what we're hoping to accomplish by our budget. We'd like to continue our full day, full week preschool. We are increasing parent fees. We would like the additional social studies teacher at the high school, offset by not replacing an art teacher. We'd like a special education teacher at the high school, offset by two tutors that positions will be reallocated elsewhere. The indoor track team was able to run this year because of other clubs that did not run, but in order to, and it was extremely successful, we had well over 40 participants. We'd like to continue that next year so that it has to go in the budget. The literacy tutor at Wheeler would be offset by a retirement of a tutor at Linden. And we continue to expand our community partnerships, who often are sponsoring many of our events. We've got a Vex robotics tournament this Saturday at our middle school, and a lot of that was through the generous sponsorship of many local community businesses. And we are going to modify the schedule at Plainville High to allow for additional interventions for students at no additional cost of staffing. It's going to be reallocating existing staff. And I think it's very important for the community to understand too, the positive impact our shared services model is having. We've been working hard, our business departments on both sides, town and board, have been working on pension plans to try to get those to have as low as fees possible with maximum benefit to our employees. Our SRO is a shared service. Our School Resource Officer, she has been a phenomenal addition to our staff. Not only is she dealing with legal matters, but she's been teaching classes on forensics. She's been doing investigations onto social media issues. Kids often seek her out to help mediate issues. The town is aware that we share technology services, so the Board has technology services that they pay for, but they are, they serve the entire community, including fire, police, library, senior citizen center. And over the past several years, we've combined our HR and payroll departments so that we are more streamlined with reduced staffing. And that concludes the Board of Ed budget. Back to you.
Just a couple more slides. One is our debt payments are scheduled to increase to $4.7 million, and as I pointed out earlier in the slideshow, that's going to be offset using debt management funds, and that's the note at the bottom of this slide. Our capital improvement plan is proposed for a little bit under $3 million. There's three major sources of revenue for the capital improvement plan. One is grants, one is what we're recommending is some additional debt management contribution, and the amount, the amount of $9.49 or a little bit under $950,000 in bold is what's being proposed, that we come out of the general fund directly through taxation. So that $9.49 matches up to the $800,000 that's, that's currently budgeted in fiscal year 19, and that's, that's where we calculate the increase from $800,000 to $9.49. Some of the major projects that are being proposed, one is the town line road reconstruction, $1.6 million. That is completely offset by a grant that we already have in hand through, through CROG in the state of Connecticut. They're, they're funding, they're completely refunding the town line road reconstruction. We're also putting in a grant for the senior center dial-a-ride van to replace, we have two of them, to replace the older one. The total cost of it is $70,000. We, we put in a grant request for 80% of that, or $56,000. If we don't get the grant, we don't, we don't plan on replacing the vehicle next year. We'll try to secure the grant for the following year. So those are, those are some of the projects that are being proposed, as well as 18 other smaller projects as well. Total proposed budget again is a 3.63% increase if adopted, as is what the current revenue estimates, it would be a 1.23 mil increase or a 3.65% increase in taxes. Mil rate would go to 35.07 or a 1.23 mil increase again. Little bit of our mil rate history, average increase over the last seven years, including the, the last six years are in blue, the proposed increase is in yellow. It includes the supplemental increase that was done in fiscal year 18. It's a total, even including the recommended mil increase for this year, over a seven-year period, that would be a 1.7% increase in the mil rate average. Impact on the average homeowner, average home value is what we get from the assessor's office. It's about $196,000. We, we tax based on state statute, which is 70% of that for somebody, average homeowner that was paying $4,644 in taxes this year, 35.07 mils, that would be an increase of Average condominium homeowner, the average value is $136,644. Again, that came from the assessor's office. Again, we tax at 70%. For a condominium owner that paid under 33.84 mils, the current mil rate paid $3,237, the increase would be $118 based upon the budget. These are some statistics with regards to Plainville's economy. Just pointing out that fixed income, measured by Social Security, went up on, it's, went up on January 1st by 2.8%. That's the largest increase in quite some time. Median household income, latest statistics that are available shows that over a two-year period, median household income in Plainville increased by 6.8%. And that the per capita income over that same, over that same two-year period increased by almost 14%. So based upon the statistics that we're getting from the Census Bureau and the state of Connecticut, income, you know, income is increasing both on a median household basis and on a per capita income. Foreclosures are down 30% over the last two years compared to the previous three years. Median house values are increasing slightly, and the unemployment rate is at a 3.1%, which is a 31% decrease since two years ago when it was at 4.5%. To give you a, everyone a feel as far as what the Plainville economy is looking like at the current time. Wanted to talk briefly about the inflation rate, and we'll end it with this one. The inflation rate is pretty much averaged about 2%, you know, 2.21 in 2016, and even project, it's even being projected through 2021 at a 2.1%. But over the last five years, and that's from 2016 to 2020, over a five-year period, the total inflation rate is, has been 10.1%. And the town budget, including what's being proposed this evening, over that same five-year period, would be, would be a total budget increase of 11.74%. What that means is that the, that the town budget has slightly outpaced the rate of inflation by, by less than 2%, 1.64%. So I'll just leave that, I'll just leave that up. So that's the end of the presentation, and certainly turn it back to Town Council.
Thank you both, Mr. Lee and Superintendent Brummet, for your, for your review. And we did see this on Monday at our Town Council meeting. For those of you who weren't available, this is, this is what we're looking at. So at this point, what I would do is open up the public hearing to anybody that wishes to speak to the Town Council. You'll be given five minutes to speak to us. Please state your name and address when you come to the podium. So does anybody wish to speak to the Town Council about the budget?
Good evening, council members, town staff, and the public. Patrick Kilby, 12 Pershing Drive, Plainville. Boy, we are in a fiscal mess. If you look at our state's picture, and it's trickling down more than ever to our local budget. So this budget increase, I'm here to ask that, I know when you're going through the budget sessions, that you try to cut as much as you can, but still maintain and preserve the quality of services to our residents in town. I know you guys do an excellent job as you go through your budget sessions on cutting the unnecessary expenses that are incurred onto the actual taxpayers here in town, and I just ask that you continue that moving forward. But do keep in mind that you still would like to keep the vital services, like our Board of Ed, our Police Department budget, and things of that nature intact.
Those are all key, important items that I believe should be kept at the increase or at, at least the minimum of the proposed budget that's being presented to us. We don't want to be behind the curve with our children's future with the Board of Ed, as well as with our actual expenditures that are being proposed for the capital improvement projects, which are barely anything. I mean, a 1.70 increase is not bad at all. What I would ask from each and every council member is that each and every council member is that moving forward, there's only so much that our state rep and our state senator and our town manager can do on lobbying officials up at the Capitol. I would ask that each and every one of you actually try to reach out to our elected officials at the state level a little bit more on issues that directly impact us here in Plainville. I think that's something that each and every one of you could probably agree, yes, there's something that we could try to do a little bit better here on issues that directly affect us here in town. So I'd ask that moving forward, anything that's being pushed down from the state's end on an increase, you actually try to reach out to the state officials. Like I said, our state rep, our state senator, and Robert Lee do a great job on trying to keep Plainville informed and make sure that we have a voice up in Hartford. So I ask that each and every one of you try to keep that effort going, because there's only so much that those three people can do, as well as CROG and CCM and the other avenues that we utilize up in Hartford. So preserve the services, cut only where you believe that the cuts could be made that are not going to directly impact the quality of life with the residents in town. And I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak to the Town Council? Yes,
As always, going to bring it down lower. Hi, Pete Krasnowski, 30 Shuttlemetal Road, Plainville. Just to kind of ring those same sentiments, I do believe the Mr. Lee and his team and Dr. Brummett and the Board of Ed have done a very good job and taken a lot of time to put forth a budget for you guys that's, you know, not too lean, not too much fluff, so to speak. You know, if you look at the last few years, one of the things, whether it's this slide or the expanded one that was on a Monday, is that the last few years, you know, things like the Board of Ed have had to put like a moratorium on spending halfway through the year. And I teach in a neighboring district, and the same type of things happen. And that just becomes a little worrisome that if you get to this point now and want to cut even further, that you could be faced with that again. And a lot of times, when you keep trying to put off things, put off things, put off things, I could tell you an example. In the school I teach at, we had put in for repairs to an elevator for two or three years in a row. And we have two in the building for students to get around with and keep putting it off, putting off this $75,000, cut it last minute in spending. And then finally it goes. And we were caught for a point for a week or two where we had no elevators available for a while. And one of them down for three months. And custodians are bringing food to the outside because the women in the kitchen can bring the food up, up flights. So when you put things off for later day, and a lot of that stuff will happen when you guys meet and try to cut things out that maybe you could keep in there, I would suggest to try not to cut any more out than you have. If you look at too, what the expenditures, I, you know, talked to some people in town, they think like, oh, it's a little bit bigger this year. And eventually, like I said, you're going to have to play catch-up on some of these items. But if you look at the, like the nine-year average, as you could see what the cost of living increases to Social Security, as well as the just inflation rate, what we've gone up on our budget is pretty much in line with that. So I think we've done a good job with those things. And I focus on two areas. What I always look at is our debt service. And if you look at what it was, I think it was in fiscal year '09 versus '19, seeing the amount down. So we're not following like the state's model where you keep just putting off and building on there. I mean, it's inevitable every town is going to bond out big projects. But it doesn't seem like we're really building on that. We're paying stuff down and not taking on unnecessary big capital expenditures. There are certain things that obviously can be out of your control when you're dealing with a budget, especially on education side, with whether it's increases to insurance, as I said, the 8% in there, we really, that's kind of out of your control. You look at what the actuaries put together, or subpay, whether you have long teacher and some unfortunate illnesses, or maternity leaves, or things like that, or the state's unpredictability, certainly on their end, whether they're going to add us and ask to increase their pension contribution, put it on the towns, or giving in to the ECS grants and things like that. So it's nice to, you know, have a little bit of room in there without going down to bare bones and stripping it further from what the Board of Ed or Mr. Lee's team has put in there, what they expect and what they need. I think they've done a good job already. I know from what I saw in the Board of Ed minutes and things like that, that, you know, the superintendent's proposed budget and the Board of Ed, they kind of already took some things out. So I think they've done a good job analyzing what's there. If you look at what the, Dr. Brummett mentioned about the spending per pupil being in the bottom quarter, you really don't want to go below that. I'm in a district, I believe, we're in the bottom three, in the yet we're considered a high district. So when you start stripping down even further, a lot of areas are affected, whether it's special ed services for students, or teachers professional development, or field trips that are really hands-on, or the steam and technology type things. So when they kind of, you know, I think they have a good handle on things. And I'm always someone who's going to put trust in the people who are in the fire, or the ones that see it every day and know what they need. And I'm not going to try to say that, you know, cut this out, cut that out, without knowing the effect of it. So I kind of put my trust in them and what the people in the, Mr. Lee's team do, and just hope that you kind of trust in their choices and what they made and keep the budget as what they suggested. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council on the proposed budget?
Dave Albert, 56 Hollyberry Lane. Let's start with a question that, the $1.3 million that we had for transfers to cover last year's overages for the medical, that's not included in the budget, any of these numbers, right? Okay, all right. I'm a lifelong resident. I'm obviously much younger than I look. But, and my kids all went to Plainville High. So this has nothing to do with, you know, the school stuff. But I would ask, are the, are benefits and salaries comparable to other schools? This is...
Yeah, we're there.
Okay. And how about the, the medical insurance with co-pays? It's in line?
On the state plan.
Okay, so you're on the state plan. And what is the percentage that the typical employee would pay? Is it 17%?
It varies between bargaining units, but somewhere between 16 and 18%.
Okay, okay. All right. So what I did was, I went back two years to the 2017, 2018 budget. And what concerns me is, is the Board of Ed slice of the pie was like 60% those years. It's now up to almost 62%. So, and, and I think it's almost entirely due to probably medical insurance. Would you agree with that? Employee benefits? Yeah, okay, okay. And, and so what I did was, the 2017, 18 budget was 57 million approved. If you go to the 62 million that's this year, that's a $4.6 million increase between the two years. But the reality is, is that there's an additional 1.3 that was transferred from our funds to cover the overages. So the real, you know, I didn't, I didn't do it here, but the real issue is that it, it's risen by $5.8 million in two years. And so the average over two years without the 1.3 is, is almost a 4% increase. And if you throw in the million three, it goes up to 5%. And again, I, I have a feeling that, that you've got some great teachers that are doing a good job, because I've seen some of the stuff that, that the students, you know, that are, are good. I know my son's had great education. But I can't tell you that, that 5% per year is, is not sustainable. It, it's unsustainable for, for taxpayers. And when you, when you put that in with the fact that that's even, people are paying this money after tax. So a 5% increase is maybe 7%, 8%, depending on what their tax bracket is. So the other question, do we have a built-in increase for next year's budget based on, you know, you know, contractually? We do.
That's factored into what I presented.
Okay, so, okay. Again, I, I don't know what the answer is. You know, I don't negotiate contracts. I'm very, I'm not envious of your position, because I think all the towns are going through this. But I would ask, and I would tell you that coming from the private sector, that we have much worse insurance than, than you guys have. And we pay a lot more of a percentage for our medical insurance. So I know that has no effect on this, this year's budget. But I would ask that you look at that when you're in negotiations in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, did you want to make comment?
Yeah, just with regards to the $1.3 million, that's a, that's based, that's not, that's not an increase. That's a, that's a deficit that ran in the, in the self-insurance fund. So it's, it's, it's a one-time cost that has to, that was a result of claims being over expectations. So it is $1.3 million. And I'm not minimizing that, but it's, it's not an increase to the, to the budget. Just...
But it's money out of the pocket.
Right. But it's, it's not, it's not a, it's not a, you can't, at least, you really can't say it's an increase over the, the increases that have occurred over the last two years.
It's an unbudgeted increase. And the reality is, if you raise something by...
I'm just saying it's a one, I'm just saying it's a one, I'm just saying, okay, all right. And with regards to teacher salaries, as part of the decision and recommendation that was made by Governor Lamont with regards to how much should be contributed by the teachers' retirement board, they penalized those, I'll use the word penalized, those towns that, that had teacher salaries that were above what they call the median teacher salary for the state. Plainville did not get the penalty because we're substantially below the median teacher salary. So when you ask, you know, how do we compare to others? We're below the median salary level for across the state of Connecticut. Just put that in perspective a little bit.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council regarding the budget for next year?
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. First, I'd like to congratulate the Plainville High School quarterback who's recently signed a letter of intent to play college football on a, on the collegiate level. Unfortunately, he did not sign his letter of intent in Plainville. He signed it in South Carolina where he's living, and he'll graduate from a South Carolina high school. This has been a trend for years. I mean, personally, I have over 50 acquaintances, friends, church members who are living in other states. And Plainville is not a closed system. We, we work in, you know, we're all part of this state. And what happens in Hartford affects us. So I mean, any increase here is not all the increase the taxpayers have to pay. We have to help foot the bill for whatever Hartford demands of us. And people are voting with their, their feet. You know, personally, my property that I bought 11 years ago in town, it's worth about 20% less than I bought it, you know. I bought it kind of at the wrong time, true. But the funny thing is, the taxes I'm paying on it right now are higher, even with the reevaluation, than they were when I first moved in. And year after year, it's just like a little increase, a little increase supposedly. And this, this mounts up. And, you know, on the personal level, the higher our taxes are, the lesser properties are going to be worth, the harder it's going to be to sell them in the future. And I don't know if anybody is looking down the road at what's going to happen. I mean, I just heard Warren Buffett, for people, he's made an announcement where he's warned companies to stay out of Connecticut, and a few other states where the, the unfunded liabilities towards their pensions are basically going to, who knows what's going to happen? I mean, it could potentially destroy our state. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm hoping somebody in the Board of Ed, Town Council, whoever, is looking down the road for the big picture on the whole state and how this affects us. No, I mean, if you can cut, I'm sure if we had a real auditor come in and look at the Board of Education or the town, they, they could reorganize things tremendously and save us a lot of money. But I mean, I don't have any expectation that, that it will ever happen. And I just want people to realize also that, I mean, the Board of Education's asking for what, 1.2 million more? That becomes the baseline, that added to their budget. That's the baseline for the next year's budget. So if they get this one point, whatever it is, two or three this year, that's going to amount to $12 million over the next decade. And we're tapped out as taxpayers. I'm sick of watching my friends move to South Carolina and Tennessee and Texas and Arkansas and Alabama. And I fear for the future of Connecticut. And I'm hoping somebody has enough vision to see into the future what's happening and do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so?
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. Nine and a half square miles, Plainville. And now we've got another $2 million, over $2 million increase in our taxes, in the budget. I, I can't fathom how you think that this is wise. It just seems to me that you've already heaped on us all other kinds of projects. Everything keeps going up around us with the economy, with what it costs to live. I can't imagine that, that you're going to sock us with over $2 million. I think that when you go to work on this, please try to whittle it down. Again, the educational part of it, these kids, they've got everything. They've got state-of-the-art schools, and they've got, they've got the Chromebooks, and they've got the this, and they've got the that. And they have teachers, they have small classrooms. But I'll tell you one thing they don't have. Now, maybe they're getting a good education. But I question as to whether or not they are getting patriotism. I don't believe they're getting patriotism in the school system. And I hear it on television. I hear what's happening out there. I've called, I've asked somebody to call me back and, and discuss it with me. It's all right if you don't want to talk about it. But you know what? It's going to come right around and bite you all in you-know-where. But there's no prayer in the school anymore. And I think that's disgusting. There's no prayer. And there used to be prayer in the schoolroom. And, and I hope, I hope you're saying the pledge of, the kids are being able to say the Pledge of Allegiance in the morning. The kids are being able to say the Pledge of Allegiance in the morning. They better be. And prayer, prayer, a simple prayer every morning. Too bad if the foreigners who come here don't want to hear it. It's too bad. And I'm so disgusted with the way things are happening in the school system. Are they singing the great old American patriotic songs? Are they... Is the music teacher here tonight? Where is he? He should be here, he should be hearing this. He will hear it, because it's on here. There's so many great songs, and people used... The kids used to sing them and be happy. How about the Great Old Hymns? It's all junk crap that they're listening to now. And I question as to what these kids are going to be when they grow up. Robotics? Oh, boy, the big emphasis on robotics. I'm glad I have a chance to talk about this tonight, because you know what robotics are going to do? They're going to take away the jobs these kids are supposed to have when they get older. Robotics, robotics, robotics. How about, how about the patriotism? I mean, can't there be a little equal balance here? I just... Robotics. My God, when you call the school system, you get the robotics dance, or the dance of the robotics. Everything is robotics now, and it's so stupid, it's pathetic. And I guess I'm going to end there. See what you can do about the budget. It's too much money. Much too much money. And people can't stand it. They're leaving in droves from this sorry-ass town.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Dale?
Dale Black, 4 CNC Avenue, Plainville. I have just, I have a couple of questions. With the health insurance, do people have to pay... If they smoke cigarettes, do they have to pay an extra amount of money a month? My insurance, at my law firm, you had to do that if you were a smoker.
To the best of my knowledge, they don't have to pay extra, although it affects more their life insurance.
It affects everybody's life insurance. It affects everybody's, because, you know, everybody... The whole thing goes up, so it's going to cost everybody more. So, the smokers should actually be paying $100 more. That's what normal companies pay. That's what they charge. You need to charge, you know? I don't know if everybody admits they're a smoker, but if some people would, it sure would help for the insurance. It's not healthy for, to smoke anyhow. That's the one thing I... I'm sorry, that's... I hate smokers. Anyhow, sorry, I've never smoked, so anyhow. And I'm just curious about the pensions. Are people able... Do they roll over vacation days into their pensions? I worked part-time at the state, and the... One woman rolled over 60 days into her pension, and that made me ill, so I'm glad to hear. That's at least a positive thing, I'll say. I don't understand why the kindergartners have the iPads. I don't understand that. I personally refused to go to school until I was in first grade. They didn't have kindergarten or preschool when I was young, they didn't have it. And so, well, actually, they had kindergarten, and I tried it for three days. The cookies were good, but nothing else was good. And I left. And I actually had my mother make homework when I got to first grade. I went to the same school as my mother. I had the same principal as my mother, and I had the same typing teacher as my mother, which is really weird. But the building's still standing down at Falls Village, Region 1, high school down there, still standing, still going strong. But, so there's a lot of stuff I don't understand, so I ask. But I think if I was, if I had children, I'd be homeschooling, because, well, a lot of my friends do homeschool. And some of my friend's kids have learned the Morse code. Went on to become interested in the climate, and her brother's a veterinarian. So they did very well. And I like it when people homeschool, yet they can still take... They can participate in some of the public schools. That's a good... You know, they pay for it, I think that's a good, good thing, plus it helps the money. But at any rate, I think they should wait till the kids are older to get into the electronics. I mean, maybe middle, not quite middle school, but I think a kindergartner is too young. I get really irritated in seeing... I just, I don't know, I just, it's just me, that's all. And I don't think it helps the budget either. I mean, they do have to learn electronics, I understand that, but I do hope the teachers are doing better education, because my first class I took for computers was actually at a continuing ed. And it was, I was the only non-teacher in that class. They had teachers go to adult ed, or a continuing ed. And I thought that was rather strange, that they didn't teach it in the school, to learn how to use a computer. So, that was back in the 90s, I think. Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council who has not done so? Mr. Edmund?
Joel Edmund, 63 Hollyberry Lane. I really don't have a lot to say tonight. I'm really not that prepared, except I had two, I have two children that didn't spend a lot of, because of a divorce or whatever, they didn't go to school here. I do have grandchildren that go to school here, and we have a good education system. There's no question about it. In the past, I've said, it seems like there is a lot of fluff. We've been lucky to have the, well, budget pass last year very easily. But as a retired person, living on limited income, I'm probably better off than most people. But this thing with Social Security, and a lot of people only get by on Social Security, on a very limited retirement income, and with the increases in the budget every year, it's difficult. And, you know, I've been around, like I say, for almost 75 years, and I remember, you know, when my father was first selectman, you know, things were pretty, well, we didn't have, we didn't have the state dictating to us what we have to do. And so, I realize that that costs more, but I really hope that you can probably cut this budget down more. I have a feeling that retired people, if they can get out and vote, they're going to try to say no, because it's way too much with the... And when you consider the future, it keeps going up. And they always say, well, I know a lot of people, and they figure they're doing pretty good at $50,000 a year, you know, income, before taxes. And, but, $70,000 is kind of like what the average person, according to statistics, that's what they make. But retired people aren't making that. And they have to get by a lot less, and a lot of times, they're not even be able to afford their medication. And that's another thing, too. I feel that the people with the Board of Education, because they make so much money, they should be contributing more towards their health benefits. Because too much is expected for the taxpayers. And that's regardless of whether they're making $70,000 a year, or $50,000, or some... A lot of people aren't even making that. So, especially if you're only making minimum wage. So, at any rate, I just, I hope, I know you guys really work hard with the budget, but try to consider, you know, the retired people, because they're struggling. And, you know, I mean, a lot of them can't even afford to move, you know? It's costly to move, you know? And it's a shame to lose a lot of our town people. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Last chance. Okay. I do thank you for your comments, and the Town Council is going to begin its budget deliberations on Monday. We will be here Monday through next Thursday, beginning at 6:30 PM. And we will be reviewing all of the town's departments, as well as the Board of Education and the Capitol that Mr. Lee has gone over tonight. So, we will be here, you're welcome to come by and listen. There will be no public input, as it is a work session for the Town Council, but we will be also filming all of those work sessions that you can watch on Nutmeg TV. So once again, thank you to Robert Lee. Yes?
Just one item. I know that there were several comments this evening with regards to negotiations and benefits and whatnot. Towns and Boards of Education are very much handcuffed with regards to how negotiations can be with the bargaining units because of the binding arbitration rules. And, you know, it basically comes down to comparing yourself against all of the other school districts, and it's really very difficult to be an outlier, to be somebody who says, for example, we're going to, we want to charge, or make employees pay more because they smoke. If that isn't happening in a lot of the other school districts, it's not going to happen under the binding arbitration, you know, rules that are in place, because you're never going to get it. You're never going to get it if it goes to an arbitrator. If you try to increase the amount of, say, contribution premium, you feel at 18% if the, if the, you know, private market is, you know, 40%. You're not going to get 40% because the average is, you know, in the 17, 18%. You're just, even if you wanted to, you're not going to, you're not going to be able to, even if you try to bargain it, you're just not going to be awarded, because you're going to go to arbitration, and the arbitration is not going to allow you to do that. So, Boards of Education in towns are very much handcuffed by those particular laws. Now, what the employees have given up is they can't strike. So, you know, but, you know, it's considered, the services that we provide are essential services. They can't strike, so they give up their right to strike in return for the binding arbitration laws. And what that does is, it can be expensive, and it puts everybody, you know, a lot, a lot of us, you know, it handcuffs what we can do, especially if you compare to the private industry. So it's very difficult, and I know that, you know, those who work in private industry say, hey, you know, we pay a lot more here, or we have to do, you know, it's a lot more costly for us. And I don't doubt that that's true. All I'm saying is, we can't get there based upon the laws that are in place in the state of Connecticut, and in other, you know, jurisdictions as well, but particularly here in Connecticut. So, just want to give somewhat of an explanation. Even if you, even if the Board of Ed, or the Town Council wanted to go in the direction that you, that you've suggested, and I'm not saying that that's, you know, wrong, that those suggestions are wrong, I'm just saying, we can't get there.
Okay. Thank you for that piece of information. So again, thank you for coming this evening. We will be continuing our deliberations next week. Thanks to all that contributed to putting this together. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm sure.
I have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.